All right, you guys good?
All set.
Everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello.
Hello.
This is our Middleton School Committee meeting on March eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. Could the members of our audience please introduce yourselves?
Christine Alina, Department of Transportation, Technology.
Michelle Ochoa, kindergarten teacher.
Great. Thank you all for joining us. All right, any remarks from the public? Okay, reports from other committees?
Uh, nope, nothing to report from other committees.
And approval of previous minutes? I don't think there are.
I think there's one set in there. And Lorraine, I know you had the, uh, Donna had sent me a note. I don't think that January twelfth had been approved, but I'm gonna hold those until April because they're not on the drive right now.
Okay.
So there's one set in there from...
Three six?
Yep, three six.
You're fast, Lorraine, thank you.
Sorry?
You're fast, thank you.
Is there a folder for today's date out there?
Yep. Three eighteen nineteen.
Amy, under, under reports of the superintendent, the first thing on a bus monitor update, they have begun using a permanent sub-trainer to do the route?
Yes, I think that is how they're calling it, right Steve?
If we, why don't we just make it substitute, you know, bus sub-trainer or something like that?
Oh, it's a subs- okay, I'm sorry. I didn't, I misread it, okay.
No, 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 no.
It's kinda...
That's why, just to wanna...
Is it okay?
I would say if you make it like bus substitute trainer.
Bus substitute trainer.
Sub hyphen maybe?
Sure, could be that too. You know, it's... Let you, that's what. Thank you.
Do we wanna note that we...
I couldn't get in on all, any of these operating budget, um, votes. It's Mark Morrisey, Fred Cloud, Mark Morrisey. I got one, but that was boring.
You snooze, you lose, Kristin.
I was a one first, and then he got all the rest.
You gotta go quicker, Kristin.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I may, I may get to them tonight.
So Kristin made the motion to approve the minutes. If anybody else has finished reading them and can second that motion, that'd be great.
Okay, so, minutes.
Good, how are you?
I'll second. See, this is the first one right here.
All in favor, or Mark, do you need...
It's my fault.
That's okay, uh, uh, aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
I'm reading and saying aye at the same time. Yeah, it's good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
All right, moving into new business.
Yep, so FY twenty operating budget, capital, and calendar. Uh, maybe just take those in reverse order for a second, and then Steve will walk us through operating and capital. Uh, our calendar is ready for final approval. Uh, this is the latest copy. We had preliminary approval at a previous meeting, and two little tweaks to it. One was that for any of our half-days that were around twelve o'clock, uh, we made them twelve o'clock, so it's not twelve, twelve oh five, twelve fifteen. So that was one of the tweaks. And then the second tweak was that for next school year, uh, the question came up, why is the last day of school like a one fifteen dismissal with lunch? And I thought it was a really great question, and so we inquired on that on a number of different fronts, and no one had a really good answer as to why it was a one fifteen with lunch on the very last day of school. Um, and so the proposal that's being put forth in all three towns is that the last day of school for a next school year, just to be clear, on the calendar would be a twelve o'clock early release with no lunch as opposed to a one fifteen with lunch. It just seemed, you know, let's send everybody out to recess one last time to see if we can keep it together on the last day of school. It seemed like a really good plan, so... Since no one really had a great reason why we were doing it that way, uh, we thought that it might be a better plan to go with twelve o'clock and no lunch. So that would be again, for next year, not this year.
Procedurally, it counts as a, as a day?
Yeah, yep.
I think it's so parents could have one last...
So those are the final two little pieces, and as you may recall, in an early draft, we had, um, I think like an April day on the thing, and was it for, I think that when local elections were, but whenever May, whenever local elections were, we had a May date on there. Uh, we couldn't do that date, we were just holding it as a placeholder if that was ever a possibility, but, um, that's now out, so we have our hundred and eighty days, and those are the final two tweaks, and we're just seeking final approval for the nineteen twenty school calendar.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Thank you, Kristi.
Second.
Second.
You're on today. Hey, I'm not gonna...
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Great.
So then back over to Steve for an update on where we were operating budget-wise, where we left last time, conversation that has happened since then, and final approval that we'll be seeking today.
Good evening. Okay, so what was included in the drive is the update for the budget adjustment sheet. Uh, Dr. Morrison and I, last week we met with town administration to discuss the proposed operating budget. The long and the short of it is that we will not need to reduce the additional sixty-one and some change, that the town will work with the schools for an operating budget increase of five point five two percent versus five. You've already made all of those motions to get the budget to an increase of six hundred fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty cents above the approved FY nineteen budget, so we are there. And what I would, even though you voted all of those adjustments, what I would recommend or request that the school committee vote a local appropriation for FY twenty in the amount of twelve million, five hundred thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred forty-three dollars. That is an increase over FY nineteen of six hundred fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars, or five point five two percent.
Where is that twelve million number on this sheet?
It's not, I just calculated, I just calculated it. So if you take the six hundred, uh, six hundred fifty-five plus thousand and you add it to the local appropriation of FY nineteen of eleven million, eight hundred eighty-three thousand, one sixty-six, it will give you twelve million, five hundred thirty-eight thousand, nine forty-three.
Five, five, five two percent?
Yes.
So the FY nineteen budget plus five point five two percent.
Correct.
So is that with or without this applying the funding for the special education stabilization?
Uh, right now, that is not factored in, Kristi. That is not factored into this model at all, and when we talk about special education stabilization, it will not be a source of revenue that the school, in my opinion, that the school committee will use. It'll be something that the finance committee and the board of selectmen will decide if they're gonna use it or not. It's not something that is in our control, if you will. They'll decide how they're gonna work with that. Uh, because it's designed, if we go back to how the finance committee looked at that, that vehicle, um, it's designed to smooth out the peaks and the valleys as far as the impact on the taxpayer, and so it'll be something they'll work out in years to come, so, um, we're not gonna use that as a factor at this point in time. It may be part of future budget discussions, you know, and we could give feedback, but it'll be something I believe, in my opinion, that the board of selectmen and the finance committee will dictate how it's used.
Based on the different levers that we have, right?
Yeah.
And how much is in that stabilization?
Right now, a little over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus interest. I think the goal is to get it to three fifty.
Yes.
You know, but they'll look at everything. As they proceed, we gave Mr. Erickson the most current special education data through budget, uh, what I have for first draft budget of FY twenty, so he's gonna work his MIT magic with all those calculations and stuff, and then we'll see where they go.
And we did not request to apply any funding to that for the next...
We did, and then we got feedback from the town. And after we got feedback from the town, the school committee made some further adjustments to the operating budget, which you see towards the bottom, but the two classroom sections...
Last meeting? Okay, just, sorry, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, we had a lot of discussion about it last, last meeting. I have a question about it. It seems strange that we're voting to put the money in there, but we can't vote to take the money out.
Yeah, that was, that was one of my thoughts as well.
That's part of the stabilization fund, Mark, is it has to be, um, school committee, board of selectmen, and town meeting, really.
Town meeting.
So we can, we can certainly make a recommendation to vote it out, right? But then you need other two sort of, you know, pieces of the pie to fall into place. Um, and I think to Steve's point, you know, after meeting with the town and them, uh, working it out with us in terms of, you know, coming in at a five point five two as a five point, as opposed to a five point oh, on the backend, they'll decide, you know, sort of what levers to pull. I think it was smart that we voted it because, um, if they decide to pull that lever, they won't be missing a school committee vote on it, right? If they, if the board of selectmen decide to go down that road, and if they decide to bring it to town meeting, it's important that we have the school committee vote on it, but that's the one that involves, you know, a much higher level of, um, discussion in terms of accessing the fund, as opposed to the recent, um, what's the other one called? The reserve fund?
Reserve fund, yeah.
Which is just the board of selectmen and, uh, the school committee. So we were wise to vote it, uh, but in discussion with town hall, you know, again, coming into the five point five two, it was, uh, we felt positive leaving that meeting, that the town wanted to work with us.
Very much so.
So Steve, just so I have the number right again, twelve million, five three nine, one one seven?
Twelve million, five thirty-eight, nine forty-three.
Okay.
And that's six hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollar increase over FY nineteen, five point five two percent.
And as I look at the sheet where it says salaries for discussion, we voted to reduce that, and that brought it down to the five point five two?
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Leaving it at sixty-one thousand dollars over the guideline?
Correct.
Okay, perfect.
Is it five point five two or three?
Five point five two.
Can you say those numbers again, just so we know the fund?
Sure.
I can't do this fast enough.
No problem.
The final budget is?
The recommended proposed budget is twelve million, five hundred thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred forty-three dollars.
Thirty-nine, right?
Five hundred thirty-eight thousand, nine forty-three.
Five thirty-eight, nine forty-three.
Yeah. Okay, you got that, Lorraine?
Oh, yeah, I had it.
Lorraine has it, she had it.
Okay, so, and that's an increase of six hundred fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
That I don't have. I have six, six, five, seven, seven.
Six, five, five.
Six, five, five.
Seven, seven, seven.
Seven, 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 thirty.
Yeah, we don't, we'll run, we get rid of the cents.
Okay.
And that's a five point five two percent increase.
Okay, thanks.
I'll update the budget, the whole budget, I'll send it out to everyone I made in a little time, but it'll all be updated, uh, to reflect all the, where the adjustments are going.
Great, thank you for, for meeting with them, and thank you to the town for supporting this level, that we don't have to cut classrooms.
It was great.
Yeah.
That's very much appreciated.
Very much so. It's a combination of Steve's winning personality and good looks.
I don't know what the look joke is.
Very happy about that, yeah.
You wanna tell you I'm sensitive?
So we need to take a vote on our final recommended budget, right?
You need that number?
No, I can read it now. I do like the visual.
Steve, I'm sorry.
So someone wants to make that motion?
I think... Can you do that math one more time?
You want the math?
You're taking five point five two percent on the eleven, eight, eight, three, one, six, six.
Correct.
What'd you get, Freddie?
Um, six fifty-five, nine fifty, seven, six, three.
Rounding.
Is that what you get?
No, it's, it's literally, I've got, I understand there's gonna be that little smidge, you know, where you have nine fifty-three versus I have seven, seven, seven? Right? So I'll stick with the seven, seven, we'll live. I'll stick with the seven, 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 and I do have five point five two. Because it, it works right off of the eleven million, eight, eight, three, one, six, six. That's the beauty of Excel, you know, and when you're doing it on a calculator, you can't get a difference.
The difference would be...
What'd you have?
I told you.
I know, but what's the difference?
Six, five, five.
Yeah?
Nine fifty, seven, six, three.
And Steve, what do you have?
Six, five, five, seven, seven, seven point three.
Hundred and seventy-three dollar difference.
Yeah, I'm good. Absolutely good.
Is it, is it because it's five point two something?
If you wanna look at it that way, let's see. Five point one, you wanna keep going? Five point one, eight, five, four.
Here's the difference.
Yeah, it's rounding. Okay.
Listen, where's Stuart's of the community's money?
I appreciate it. I do, thank you. Not a void.
It's on him, I'm just, I'm just relaying the mediator.
Square me away.
Any other questions for Steve or about the budget? No? Okay, then if someone wants to make the motion to approve our final budget for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty?
Approve our, our proposed final budget, right?
Correct.
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, congratulations.
Good work, everybody.
That's great.
Great job.
So part two?
Part two.
Part two, capital plan. So we, again, we met with the town, town hall, discussed the capital plan, and at this point in time, what was requested is that we, uh, discuss and reconsider the total technology ask, and specifically at Howe Manning, reducing the number of interactive boards being replaced from twenty, and changing that from twenty to ten, which would reduce the Howe Manning ask by forty-five thousand dollars. The other piece, which is, is pretty straightforward, is not taking or requesting, um, the change or re-appropriating the funds for the Howe Manning NVR, that's forty-nine thousand, four thirty-one, and that we bring that back for FY twenty-one. What they would do is money that's left over from the Fuller Meadow security warrant article, they, it would close out to the general fund, then they'd re- remember and re-appropriate it for Howe Manning, so they recommend doing it for FY twenty-one.
Sorry, Steve, I have not taking or re-appropriating the one?
I wanna, so you have it right for the minutes. We have a Fuller Meadow security warrant article, there's gonna be money left over when, uh, at the end of the year, we're gonna turn that money back. All right, and then in FY, for FY twenty-one?
We will request that.
We'll ask the town?
Yep.
To use those funds to replace, uh, the NVR at Howe Manning.
I don't have it. I'm gonna have to ask you to, to spell it out for me.
Send me an email, I'll send one back.
Keep going, Steve.
Just the reduction of the, the boards?
Mm-hmm.
Is specific to Howe Manning, and how many boards does that equate to?
That, what it does is, the original request was for twenty boards?
Into ten.
And it would reduce it to ten.
Sorry.
And they're asking for a longer phase-in, uh, with regard to the interactive boards.
That number was built, Kristi, on, um, James and his team are piloting, um, some
boards here now to see which one we wanna go with, and we put forty-five hundred as a placeholder, because that was the one that was the highest price, so we may be able to get a few more with the additional forty-five that's left, depending upon...
The pilot, the pilots of which ones are the best, anyway.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, I think we had, we did not vote on this last time because we wanted to discuss it a little more. Is this a good time?
Except you.
Did you wanna keep working through?
No, 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 I, I'd say that this is the one that is the most discussion, um, it's, with Dr. Morrison, and as far as the feasibility study for the parking lot?
Go ahead.
Will be another piece, but I'd say getting this one done, I'm stretched, I am pressed for time myself, um, so it's really, this one may take the most discussion. Is that a fair?
Yeah, and I think what comes into play, so in our conversation with, uh, Andy and Sarah when we met, and Tanya when we met over at town hall, was the other item was the parking lot feasibility study, and you see that on there for one twenty, and, you know, Andy had indicated that, um, he didn't necessarily wanna pull that one yet, because this is our one campus, as we know that, out of our six, that just has the one mode of egress in and out, and we also know that, um, just, you know, dismissal and arrival can be very, very challenging, uh, at Fuller Meadow based upon our driveway configuration. And so we had said to Andy, we hope to have a better number, um, just for, from a design phase perspective. We had put a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in as a placeholder, uh, because typically when we put a placeholder in, we go from design all the way through bidding, so you have a real hard number to go with, um, coming out of that process. And in talking with, um, Andy, he said, you know, if that's a number that is reduced, that, I think certainly that has a better chance from the town end of things of being something that would be considered. I think that's something that the town has, um, some interest in seeing that being addressed as well. And so, in talking with Steve Clifford, uh, the feasibility study that we would engage in, what that would involve would be evaluating current conditions, provide recommendations for work needed with a cost estimate. There's no bidding phase or construction, uh, construction administrative phase included in this, uh, new number that we have, and the new number is fifteen thousand, not a hundred and twenty thousand. And so that would just literally be evaluate the current conditions and provide recommendations for work needed with cost estimate. So, you know, the bigger number is always associated with taking something through the bidding phase, and so we have to communicate to Andy, we just got this number today, um, that that one twenty is now going to be fifteen, and what that means is, you know, I'd love to have a conversation with Andy, now that number's coming in at fifteen, does that free up some additional funding for that forty-five? If that's something that we wanted to, if the committee wanted to pursue that, because that's certainly, you know, a much lower number, um, than where we are as opposed to the one twenty.
And we would still be hiring, um, someone to?
Yep.
Do this feasibility?
It'd be a firm coming in to do the feasibility study, uh, and again, evaluate current conditions and provide recommendations for work, uh, needed with cost estimates. So just like you'd have an estimate for something at home?
Sure.
You know, similar to that, but this is obviously a much bigger scale because we're talking about, you know, maybe is there a road around the building, how do we redesign the parking lot, how do we redesign the driveway? So, that's sort of where that stands.
Is that a bid?
What's that?
Is that a bid?
That doesn't go through the bidding process, Freddie. We had, um, we worked with a couple of local architects, we tried to get a number as a placeholder, um, to give us a sense of, is it fifteen thousand, is it fifty thousand, is it seventy-five thousand? Steve, with that fifteen thousand cost that would require going out to bid for the estimate?
We gotta look at, um, we gotta look at chapter seven.
Okay.
You know, to confirm if we gotta put out RFQs or RFPs for that.
What's usually the price hinge point for that?
Um, it could be, I, I'm not, we gotta remember the law as far as the threshold, it could be ten.
Yeah, that's what I thought it was.
You know, and it could, or it could be higher, or it depends on the total cost of design or the estimated cost of the project.
Right.
And it's a percentage.
Right.
So that's why I wanna go back and look at chapter seven to make sure I got it right.
Freddie, if it does go out to bid, we would put it out to bid, depending on what the law tells us.
So what was the fifteen, the fifteen wasn't for the study?
Fifteen is for the feasibility study.
It is?
Yep, yep, feasibility study to evaluate current conditions and provide recommendations for work needed with cost estimates. Again, not taking us through a bidding phase, not taking us through a construction admin phase, but just giving the town a sense of like, okay, this, A, is it doable? Is there even enough room?
Yeah.
You know, to make any changes on the footprint of land that we have at Fuller Meadow? And if there is enough room, here's an idea, and here's what it would cost, and that would give the town some indication of, of that.
So how does that play out? You know, so then that's next year?
Mm-hmm.
And then, you know, I get the, the want or the, um, the fact that we wanna try to reduce the capital budget, but I just, I mean, this is a real problem right now, so, you know, going, reducing it from a fifteen thousand dollar endeavor to like a forty-five thousand dollar endeavor, how far out does that delay any change?
Wait, you mean if a fifteen?
If we were to make a change?
Yeah, but you said, just to make sure, a fifteen thousand dollar endeavor from a hundred and twenty?
Oh, I'm sorry, a hundred and twenty, I had the forty-five for the technology.
So the, all of the fifteen thousand dollars for a feasibility study is the very first step that you take.
Sure.
And so it's this thirty thousand foot view of our situation, and then they make some recommendations in that study, and it allows the school committee, the town, board of selectmen, finance committee, if there's a building committee involved, it allows them to make some, you know, considerations to say, okay, do we want to go further? So it had, it doesn't have a hard quote, it will give you very preliminary information and preliminary numbers.
Okay.
And then it's almost enough information to either continue the discussion or table the discussion. And so if you decide to continue it, I believe the next steps you'll need to do is take, take you to into design, if, if you say like, yes, we see where this is going, we wanna go into possible design, construct, you know, and plan, putting plans together, all of that, uh, whatever other testing may need to be done, and then taking it all the way through bidding, which means that you would be paying another, a larger sum of money?
Correct.
For an engineer and an architect, or one or the other, or both?
And plans.
To get a more detailed work in, a, a plan put together in specificity to go out to bid?
Right.
So that when you get ready for the FY twenty-one?
Mm-hmm.
Budget, or, you know, town meeting in FY twenty, you have a hard quote, and then the town can vote on a hard quote and specific information, and if the town moves to go forward, then the work would begin in the summer of two thousand twenty, FY twenty-one.
The only part I'm not, I, I, I get it. The only part I'm confused about is we have fifteen thousand to spend next year, so when would we have, when we, let's say, we make a decision, yes, let's go forward, put all the plans together?
So let's say July, so fiscal year starts July one?
Yes.
And we say, great, let's get the guy, the team down here?
Yep.
And let's, you know, get that feasibility study done, right?
Yep.
So we now, that process starts, let's say we have that for, we're rolling back into school next year, and we have some level of feasibility study, that's when we would engage in that bigger, deeper budget process around, okay, the feasibility study came back, this is going to cost, here's the idea, and it's gonna cost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, you know, to reconfigure the, you know, the driveway or whatever, and now you've gotta go out and do all the work associated with that. So, you know, Steve, I think in your estimate, I don't think you'd have something happening if this is...
Maybe FY twenty-two now that you said.
Yeah, exactly, I think you probably have to like...
Because you have to get the design money.
Correct.
You have to get design money first.
Correct.
So that would, design money would come in twenty-one?
Twenty-one, and then twenty-two.
Execution would be twenty-two.
Yeah, yeah, might have some of you, yeah.
So if you do the one twenty now, or a portion of it, or, you know, if we can think creatively, can we move up execution or completion to, by a year?
Well, that, with the whole thing about one, the one twenty, in my mind, when I put one twenty on the plan, it was to take it through bidding.
Yeah, I know, so that would move us up a year, right?
It, it gives you a hard, the goal would be that it gives you a hard number if it is the will of the community, of everybody involved to move forward with any work, uh, on this campus.
Yep.
And it would give you the hard number so that when you?
Yeah.
Go to town meeting for twenty-one, that you have that information.
I think Andy was receiving some feedback from some of the other boards that, you know, why, why even engage in the process, just, if you just, you know, look at this site, it's not fixable, it's not doable, um, so there was some, you know, feedback to Andy around, you know, why, why even spend anything on it because of, you know, if you just walk the site and look around, it doesn't seem to be enough of a, you know, land for us to make any difference? And, you know, I think what Steve and I tried to stress is, well, you never know And, you know, I think what Steve and I tried to stress is, well, you never know until you actually have the expert come out and tell you that. You know, it's one thing for, you know, us to kind of look around, but someone might say, well, we've got some land on, to the right of the driveway that if we push it 12 feet this way, and we can add another lane, or attic bus lane, or whatever the case may be. So, I think based on that feedback, the 120 was feeling like a non-starter, you know, at Town Hall. But I think if that number was to come in lower, there'd be more of openness to exploring what the total cost would be. And so, again, we have to communicate that number. We got that number today, that $15,000 number back to Andy as well at Town Hall. But the 120 was feeling to me, Steve, I don't know if you agree, but a little bit of a non-starter based upon some of the feedback that the town was receiving.
Yeah, it could be, yeah, I don't disagree with Scott.
I don't know, I just think, I get it. I just think that it is a real issue. It's a, you know, there's a safety component to it. And to just like prolong it more, I mean, there is only one way out. And if something were to happen and that way was blocked, there's really no way, no safe way to get out.
In my opinion, I, unless you lose a lot of the parking that's along the street right now, and I gotta assume, I don't know where a property line is on that side, but we know where...
Coming up the driveway?
Yeah.
There's a little rock wall mark that's sort of in the woods. I think our general guess right now is it's sort of to that little rock wall area.
Not a lot of space. You've got 15 spots, parking spots from the street down to the...
Approximately.
What's that?
Approximately.
Maybe 12. You'd lose all, I mean, that's really the only option that I could see looking at the map. There's nothing, there's no, unless you bought the house out back, or you buy some of that land, there's no, you lose those parking spots and a little bit of that grass, you're not, it's still one means of a grass.
Right, so, kind of keeping that in mind to be recommending like a wrap-in before we know if it's feasible. We're allocating money that we might be able to use for other things right now. I'm not disagreeing.
Yeah.
We need a change, but we've got the space we've got.
Yeah, and I hear your point, too. I echo what Amy said. I think it's, you know, the 15 allows us to definitively say whether or not it can be done, you know? And I think that some conversation right now that maybe it can't be done. And so, why allocate a big chunk if that's a general, let's actually find out for 15 if it's even doable.
Wouldn't we have the option, I mean, if it was determined feasible, that we could do an ad hoc request, right? However form it takes to push forward with the design?
Yep. Yeah, there's other avenues.
Yes, that's a good point.
Once we get a harder number. Yeah.
And maybe the harder number, I know we've had conversations around voting and using the space for other reasons, but the harder number will also help us with thinking about if this is the best long-term plan.
Yep.
For other people to be, you know, for the community service, for looking at other...
That's a great point, too. Right, that study might tell us, you should not be doing voting here.
Right, right, exactly.
That's right.
The capacity of this driveway is...
This is not a good, this is not a good location.
It is what it is, and we need to limit the amount of people.
That's a really good point. Yep.
Yeah. Okay. Those are good.
This is a good point.
No, it looks, it's just ground-up pavement that's...
So, do you guys, can we switch to the technology piece, or do you have more for this?
Can we just look at this for one more minute?
Yep.
We're looking at the map over here. So, that's the space I'm talking about. There's these parking law, parking spots. Can you zoom in a little more? One, two.
We can pay Mark to do the feasibility.
What's that?
We can pay you to do the feasibility.
I was wondering about those side parking.
I mean, I'm not an engineer, obviously, but I've had my...
No, I know.
...building construction supervisor, I was in 20 years, I'm not a, it's not rocket science, there's not a lot of space there. You're gonna lose, those parking spots are gonna have to go somewhere. There's no, unless you lose the baseball fields times two, which isn't gonna make the rest of the town happy.
The berm, you know, can you cut into that?
Up here on the hill?
Yeah.
You get setbacks for property lines, right? And it's a hill, and you have to build a...
Erosion containment.
$150,000 wall.
Yep.
I mean, and you lose playgrounds or space there. That's really the only extra if you lose that playground, but the...
Playground, you just put it in.
I know, I'm not advocating that we do that. I'm just saying, that's the only space other than this little stretch here, which, you know, I assume, in my opinion still, until you talk to this person or this person and we're able to buy some land, it's good money after that.
And I think, again, that's the sort of the idea we were hearing at Town Hall. And if there's a smaller number that we can commit at to prove that, I think that's more digestible.
Steve, do you want us to vote on this and then move on, or...
It's up to you guys. I mean, all of them, I think you'll want to take action.
Okay.
I know that's curious, but I don't know.
And the building interior, Steve, the 5,000 was removing the bubbler.
Yeah, that'll come out of the operating budget.
Yeah.
Okay, so that...
But the 22.5's gotta stay.
So, the new amount, Amy, are on the right there.
Yep.
So, if the end-user tech, if the committee wanted to go that route, Steve took the 34 and the 129, added together, subtracted the 45, and got the 118.
Yeah.
Tech infrastructure, 15 and 15, that stays at 30.
Right.
Left to right. Building interior, he added the 22 and the 5, and then subtracted 5 out based upon feedback from Town Hall, 22.5. Parking lot feasibility study, 120, we now know it's 15. So, the new amount there would be 15. Again, I don't want to speak for the town, but my sense was that that was going to be a more digestible number than the 120.
Okay.
And Howmaning security, as Steve talked about, that would be a return of the money to the town and then seek to get that back in FY '21.
So, then the new total would be 185? Okay.
We haven't voted on the...
947.
Correct.
And up to the end-user technology with the new amount, the change would be a loss of how many boards, or we don't know?
10.
Is it still?
Roughly.
Roughly 10.
Depending on the pilot.
If you, yeah.
The board we end up with is going to come at a different cost, so it depends on which one we finalize and how much that board actually costs, whether or not we can get 10 of them, or 12 of them, maybe, or 13 of them.
So, you put the per unit in at 4,500 because that was the most expensive one they were piloting, but if you, you know, if they go with a $3,800 one, then we picked up, like James just said, a couple more.
Right, right. Okay. And how do you guys feel about us having less boards? Like, I know a couple meetings ago, this was a really big issue that you were presenting to us about that there's a lot of teachers, the boards are ineffective, they're not useful, and so, you wanted to do them, and the town, which I totally understand, is asking us to slow it down. Is that gonna slow down the teachers?
Well, I mean, I think it's, I think either way, even with our initial proposal, we were thinking of like phasing it in over maybe two years or two-plus years, and I think cutting it down, it's the same process, it's still gonna be phasing it in over a couple of years. Currently, they have those giant Edson projectors that you see in every single classroom, they're very large, right? And they just project right onto a whiteboard marker board. And if that projector is working at its full functionality, that you can just interface right on that marker board itself with digital pens, and you can manipulate it like it is a computer screen even though it's just a whiteboard marker screen. What's happening to a lot of those boards is those features aren't working with any type of consistency or dependability. So, it works as a wonderful projection system. Teachers can still project really great stuff up there, but the interactivity is limited in terms of how well it works in different classrooms. So, that it's still an effective teaching tool.
Okay.
So, that part still works, and teachers can still do cool and innovative things, just, but it's just essentially a glorified projection system.
Okay.
These new boards, the ones we're piloting, the JTouch boards, which are the more expensive model, so far, they've been very well received. We've got them in sixth grade classroom, a fifth grade classroom, a fourth grade classroom, and a special education classroom. We're also bringing some into the preschool very soon. That'll be this year, correct?
Correct.
So, we'll have three new ones all installed in the preschool program. If we were to go that route, we're hoping that what we experienced through the pilot is that we have a higher level of dependability in terms of, you know, that the technology's gonna be functioning up to its potential of what it can do, so we eliminate all that frustration. The interactivities with these has been great so far. We want to make sure it's a really age-appropriate tool and that it's something that the teachers can really grow with because it's got a lot of potential in terms of what it can do. So, we want to make sure that we can actually access all that it's even capable of so that we're not kind of like over supplying ourselves with technology. But if we were to slow down, I mean, we're looking at probably around 36 or 37 boards school-wide that we want to get done.
Over two years.
You know, this year alone, well, over a couple of years. This year alone through the pilot and through preschool, we already have seven done.
Okay.
You know, if we can get another 10 in next year, if we go the most expensive route, then that's 17, that's almost halfway there, and that's just between a pilot year and one year. That's not that slow.
Steve, I love you, man.
I'd say so.
Yeah, I mean, the current technology still gives us some educational advantages, it just doesn't give us everything that the new technology will be able to give us.
And I think one of the questions we were, or one of the things we were talking about was, you know, doing this like three-to-four-year phase. Is the technology gonna be, you know, what we purchased and install now, is it going to be not obsolete but outdated? Or it could be obsolete, actually, four years later when we're finally installing the last phase. I don't know how the license...
Which is kind of good that we're phasing it in with some different tech.
Yeah, I mean, technology does turn around pretty quickly, right? I'd like to think that we're gonna get more than three-to-four years out of this board before it becomes obsolete. I think one of the other things is that there's a comfort level all teachers have to get to with new technology, and I think this model of a few years allows early adopter teachers to really jump on it. I think it allows other teachers in the building to start to learn from the early adopters so they can get comfortable and see it coming and get familiar with it before it just shows up in their room and really kind of just quickly changes the whole way in which they deliver instruction. The pilot boards, for example, rather than wall mounting them, we bought them on like rolling stilts so that as we got deeper into the pilot, we could start to roll them into other classrooms and give other teachers an opportunity to play with them a little bit. So, I mean, I think the phasing method allows educators to get kind of up to speed and comfortable with how things are changing and really adapt their instructional style to be on level with the new technology that they're gonna be teaching from.
This was a two-year phase all, originally, it was 20. They had 20 in the budget originally.
I don't even think we specifically settled on two years. We just thought we'd try to get most of the school done and then try to get, in phases afterwards, get every board done.
I think even if you go over the two-year thing, you said you had 37 altogether.
Approximately, somewhere around there, 36.
You got seven done, and if we were able to pick up another 10, there's 17.
Yeah.
So, that leaves 20 for next year, which is kind of where we were this year with 20 in the budget.
Mm-hmm.
So, it could be something where next year, we're asking for 20 again on the capital budget, and that would finish off the remaining classroom.
Then we did it in really like under two and a half years.
Steve?
I just wanted to add just two quick things to build on what James said, which was spot-on. One is that, Kristen, it's possible that in four years, the technology could be outdated. I wouldn't say necessarily obsolete per se, but the model that is most current will definitely change over time. But one, if we go with the JTouch board model, one thing that we found that is really effective about it is that it's agnostic for device, meaning you could cast or use it using an iPad, or a phone, or a Chromebook, or a laptop, or a MacBook, or a lot of different kinds of devices. You don't have to be locked into just one kind. So, that's nice in terms of its longevity and its adaptability of use. So, even if in four years, there is a new model, I feel pretty good that it still will be able to be used with different kinds of devices. And the other thing that James alluded to is that the current functionality of the board is that it, most boards at Howmaning are serving purely as a projector because the interactivity part just isn't functional anymore. So, teachers are going from not interactivity to they would be picking up a big piece of functionality in their instruction. So, in some of our other schools around Trittown, teachers are going from an interactive board, which now is dying, to another interactive board. At Howmaning, I would say most teachers would be going from a tool that is not currently functioning in an interactive way to picking up this new way of presenting and teaching and learning.
So, it's a change to culture.
Yep.
So, waves helps with the comfort level of that.
How is the normal warranty on a smart board?
Months or a year?
So, they have, they did it by the number of hours that its lifespan is, and I forget the number of hours, but we did it in terms of years and months, and it was like 17 years long was the amount of time that those screens should be functional for. They look like big mounted TVs. They're the boards that are in the PD center, so if you want to take a peek on your way out or another day, that's what they look like, giant mounted TVs. So, they're very durable and have a pretty long lifespan.
These are the new ones?
Correct.
What about the ones that are not functional now? Are they're not covered in a warranty anymore?
No. They're pretty appropriately at the end of their life based on the year they were installed at Howmaning.
Which was when?
Nine years ago.
When the building was built.
About.
Okay.
I mean, that'll be the next point, as Steve alluded to in the past, you know, a bigger tech infrastructure overhaul here, you know, down the road, and possibly partnering with the town on that.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Okay, so, if there aren't any other questions, someone wants to make the motion to approve the proposed, I don't have the word, capital budget. It's $185,947. That's the total for the capital budget.
Steve, does that match where you have? Great.
Can you say that again? 185,947?
Uh, 185,947.
Okay.
Yes.
We're voting it all, all in tech, not individual pieces.
We can do individual because we've done individual for the others.
Probably a good idea to do it that way.
Okay, so the end-user technology would be 118,447. Someone wants to make that motion?
118, what is it?
447.
447.